Further comments, Ms. Anderson?
Oh, I just found a nice green color palette. I have a link to it. Should I email it to you, Mr. Miller? Maybe everybody could get it. I don't have everything.
That would be great. Further comments, Ms. Anderson?
Do we all agree that it should be different tones of green or maybe two contrasting colors? Is that, do we all agree on that at least?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Now, I did notice that the city manager's office signed on. Does Leslie, do you have any further comments? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay.
It's okay if you don't.
I don't have any comments. I logged in just because I noticed it wasn't being streamed on YouTube. So I wanted to make sure that this was a public meeting that was public. So I apologize it wasn't done sooner. And I trust what the community wants the, wants the fence color to be. You guys are doing a pretty good one.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Leslie.
If you just give me one more second, I'm going to send everybody a link that we'll take a look at now for the different greens.
And through the chair, I just wanted, we can make screen sharing available if you'd like to share it with everybody, where the public can see it too.
That would be, would be nice because I'm using my phone too. I'm not very text savvy.
Yeah. Ms. Milton, would you be able to make Commissioner Anderson the host so that she could post what she found?
Oh, yeah. She can share it right now as well. I allowed screen sharing for all participants.
Okay, thank you. Excellent.
So there's a button, agreeing button should be on the bottom and it says share screen. So if you click that, you could share what you are looking at with everyone.
Yes, see it.
It might make it go a little faster too, so we're not checking our emails.
Sorry, I have to remove, I have to remove some case files from my desktop.
Oh.
Just real quick.
Well, you know that juniper and emerald's not a bad combo. Even the willow is making, it's not bad. Emerald and juniper? Or lagoon and peacock?
Okay, now we're getting.
I think it should pop.
So are you thinking more of a lime green then? Or is that what you, or what do you mean?
It's off this, it's off this wheel, peacock and lagoon. It's kind of pretty. It's on the blue-green wheel. And then there's always, of course, seaside high colors, red and black.
Red, white.
You know, I'm kind of.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I can share my screen unless I leave the meeting. And I just select screen sharing and come back in.
That's okay. I'll try to share it on my side. One second.
Thank you.
Oh, cool. Okay.
That's pretty. Yeah. The very first one, that 004521, I think that's probably what Ray had in mind and what we're all thinking of this forest green. Oh, and it does say forest green and black. I think Jackie's right, even the, you know, the bushes and things would just blend right in there. And I, I think we should go a little bit lighter. Maybe down on the right-hand side? Where'd it go?
I took it down. Do you want me to put it back up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. But take a look at lagoon. This is lagoon down here. And peacock, that's more of a blue-green, blue-green color. So I'm kind of in between there somewhere, blue and green.
Is this 1115B25, Alex? Is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm looking at the page six of the, of the wheel. Yes.
Well, I can't see it.
The wheel?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Yeah.
You got your phone out?
If I can.
There you go.
I'm looking at it, my phone.
You're looking at the lagoon and peacock there, Alex?
Yes, right here.
I think, yeah, I think actually that might be, I know I said for the green at first, but since we're next to the ocean and we, it's kind of like an ocean mist. I think that might be a better fit. I think I like that. Now that, now that you said that.
Yeah. Peacock and lagoon, pretty.
Yeah, I think so.
Do we have graffiti issues over in that area at all? No?
No.
That one, the red one has never been graffitied, right? You guys over there?
Not been tagged, not that I know of, Alex.
Oh, it's been tagged? Oh, yes. But there, they just painted over it. They painted a different color red over it. That's what kind of makes it look very trashy.
Yeah.
So I mean, there are, there are things that we can put on top of the paint that would seal it and that would make it easier to remove graffiti.
Yeah, I think I like that idea because we're next to the ocean and it represents, you know, the sea. And I think that's a better fit because the forest green is good, but like, it is like, Lake Tahoe. And I know what you're saying, but we're more about the ocean. So I think.
We ever do the bridge, it'll go totally with the, that side of the bridge project on San Pablo.
Yeah, I think it'll brighten up that neighborhood. And I think they would take pride in it, I would hope, than not have that done. I don't know.
Well, it's just, it's the kids.
Yeah.
I just know our mayor has a real issue about graffiti and tagging. And I know when you try to paint over, unless you paint the whole thing, it looks blotchy. And so it might pass, the darker the better. Because then the tagging doesn't occur as much. But, you know, I understand about the ocean too, so.
They do.
Take a look at peacock there. Peacock's pretty dark. It's a darker blue. You see it right here?
Yeah.
The peacock and the lagoon. Either way, they're gonna, they, the taggers get real, they use either white tagging or they, they know how to, they want to get to it. But, I mean, like the red one wasn't done, I don't think. So when it was red, it wasn't tagged.
Okay.
I think we should just take a chance on it and go with the ones we all like.
Okay. Any other comments for the discussion? Can I stop sharing this? Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
Hi, I do think just because it's going to be freshly painted, it might present sort of an attractive place to, maybe it will attract graffiti just for a moment, like when it's first done. I think at least for the, when it's first painted, we should think about the graffiti coating that goes over. It's a coating that makes it really like a lot easier to clean off.
Oh.
I don't know how much it is, but.
One of the things we can do today is recommend a color and then recommend also they put seal in. Now, whether they do or they don't, it's not our property, it's not our say. PG&E is fully funding this and is totally their say. All we're doing is recommending, so we can recommend that. I also want to recommend, if you look at the currents, if you look at it now, it has warning signs all over it. And I want to recommend removal of those as well into the motion. If anybody else agrees with me, because if you have these warning, don't enter signs, three feet from each other through the whole sign. It doesn't, it's not the most appealing looking. So I think that we should recommend that as well. This is all our recommendations to PG&E, so.
Yeah, I think all the signage should come down. Didn't you say that it's no longer in use or did I get that wrong? That, that property? Or doesn't have the, there is no such thing as warning because it's not dangerous or something like that? Exactly.
This property was determined to be like a level one security and it was, and it doesn't have anything high voltage that is dangerous to the public. So they changed the structure of this facility. That's why it's, it's not as dangerous anymore. That's what, that's the, so you're, you are right, Ramona.
So your suggestion is perfect then. Get rid of all that.
Alex, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Please, yes.
Underneath the fence, there's like this, it looks like it's on a stucco or something. Is that going to be painted like a white? Or what would that be? Is that going to be like the color of whatever that, that part is? If it's peacock, that bottom part will be peacock. Is that how that would go?
The best we can do is recommend that they paint that part the color too, or leave that alone. Whatever we recommend to them is what we, what we recommend.
Well, it looks like you can see leftover red falling from the bottom of it. So it looked like it would have to get either a fresh new paint or the color of that section. If it's peacock there, it should go all the way down because it needs to be painted.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Councilmember Pacheco, do you have any suggestions in this project? Since you're here?
I think you're making very, very good decisions. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, anybody else?
As far as the landscape, is that what we're going to talk about next?
We don't, she didn't show up today. She told me she couldn't show up today. I was hoping to get her to come, the PG&E representative, but she, she couldn't come today. So she, she's, they're just doing the landscape and we have no, we don't have any say in that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, I will open it up to the public. Any public comments? Was there anything submitted to the city?
No, nothing was submitted in writing prayer to or during the meeting.
Thank you. All right, so we can, are we all on agreement with, with colors or how are we doing? What, does anybody want to make a motion? Do we want to have more discussion?
I'd like to make a motion unless there's someone out there that has it. I think we should wrap it up.
Well, there's one more thing that I want to bring up too, is when you're going up San Pablo and it's on the corner there. They, they, the fence right in front of the greenery, I would like to suggest, if it's possible, if we can include this in the motion. I would like to suggest they put like City of Seaside on that side. Or seaside, something on that side. And they might not take our suggestion, but I would like to include that in the motion, if it's possible, if you guys agree. But when you're coming up San Pablo and right in front of the greenery, it's the corner there like this. And it would just say City of Seaside. And I think that would really improve and give set people a sense of pride in that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You're talking on the slide number two, on that corner, I believe where that truck is, right? Is that what you're talking about right there? Above the greenery and that, it comes into a corner?
Exactly. The second picture on, on page two. That corner right there, we put City of Seaside and then, then they're going to fix the entrance, entranceway on Flores.
So when they do that sign, if we all agree, again, like they're going to choose what it's, how it's going to look or we're going to?
This is all just recommendations to PG&E. They can do whatever they want. It's their property.
Okay.
On the City of Seaside sign, if is that possible that City of Seaside could do that portion of it? Because I know it's their property. But, but, you know, Veronica alluded to, you know, how are they going to do it? How are they going to put the sign up?
Well, we just, we just asked them to maybe either put lettering or something. And if they don't do it, then this commission can go back to PG&E and fund that if we want. Commissioner LeBeuf?
Oh, because I've seen it. They, for City of Monterey or City of Carmel, for their substations, they have a nice little sign or plaque that says where they're located. So I know where you're going with this.
Exactly.
And beside, and their, and their fences look much better than the one we're, we have anyway. So the least we can do is ask.
That's right. Ramona, are you prepared to move forward with your motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to paint the PG&E fence to a peacock and Laguna, lagoon, blue. Peacock and lagoon, blue-green coloring on each pallet or each section. Along with all the signage that they have now taken down. And then add their City of Seaside sign in good taste.
First.
I submit.
Second. There's a first and a second. I'll take that to the public again one last time. Seeing none, we will move forward with that motion unless there's anything else.
Oh, oh, go ahead. Are you going to, go ahead?
Go ahead, Ramona. Do you have anything else to add?
No, not to this subject, no.
Okay, there was a first and a second. So Jackie, roll call vote, please.
Alex Miller?
Yes.
Ramona Alida Reid?
Yes.
Shanda LeBeuf?
Yes.
Veronica Velasco?
Yes.
Ray Riordan?
Yes.
Janet Anderson?
Yes.
We will move to item four, and that is reports from staff.
I have no report at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to item five. And item five is commissioner reports. This is the time in the meeting that if you want to add something to our next agenda meeting in April, you can do so. Or if you have any general comments to the welfare being of the city or this commission, now is the time to bring it up. LeBeuf?
Um, I would like to get a printout or a location of the houses that I need to look at for the house of the quarter, please. I'm not quite sure of the houses I need to look at, so I can do them.
I will get you that information. Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Pacheco?
Just a thought for you. If your next meeting is in April, if fiscal year ends June 30th, if you are going to make any recommendations to the city council as far as the funding go, probably timing is very close at hand. Then you may not meet in April, then you might meet in July. In between, might be some challenges. A thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramona?
I just wanted to remind everyone of the meeting coming up next, but Dave has already mentioned it, so April, whatever.
Commissioner Velasco?
Oh, I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to do the reading on this past Saturday. And for Ramona, and I can't remember who else, that extra, paid extra for that one gentleman out there that was doing some work. It looks really good. And the next thing I want to say, I'm not sure if it was Ray that put the pink filter on the seaside. I saw it. It looks really nice. Looks good.
Ramona, could you give a brief statement about that?
I put the pink in. I put the pink up on last weekend and I already wrote to Jackie and Dave, it missed a little. But I put it up and then it was removed this week. I meant that it was, some of the ends were hanging over the lighting or the light itself. So maybe someone thought it was sloppily done and they removed it. I don't know if it was a city official or if one of the businesses around there just took it down. But yesterday I put it back up and did a little neater. And plan on putting another film because it doesn't, it's not as bright as it was before. So I'll put another film on there. And then I plan on doing St. Patrick's Day and Easter. So if anyone else has any suggestions on every month, just remind me and I'll be glad to put that film up there.
Go ahead, Ramona.
I'd like to get to a point where we're doing, we're doing like for LGBTQ, we're doing colors or for Easter, we're doing pink, we're doing green. And Ramona is really taking charge of that project. And so thank you for that. We're changing the colors of the sign to bring a community together to rally behind seaside and the seaside portal project. So any other commissioner reports?
You can put purple up.
Which one?
Tuesday's Mardi Gras. You can put purple or purple up.
It's kind of purplish pink now. Will that coincide with Valentine's Day and Mardi Gras? Mardi Gras through what?
Well, Mardi Gras is Fat Tuesday is Mardi Gras Day. And then, and then Ash Wednesday, then you take everything down for Lent. Fat Tuesday. That's the last day of carnival.
We can.
Valentine's Day is Sunday, so.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss this in the future, what holidays we want to do. And, and we do want to switch it up because last Christmas I got a little bit, I got some comments about other religious holidays. So we need to be very conscious and, and we need to make sure that we're, we're celebrating everybody equally. And we're not showing any unfair bias to any religion. So any other further comment? Commissioner reports?
No.
Okay, we will add, we will add coloring to the, to the lights in a future meeting. So at this time, we'll move to item six, and that's adjournment.
Aye.
I have to say, I move to adjourn.
This meeting.
Okay, all in favor, just say out loud, aye. Okay. Everybody, have a great, have a great day. Thank you for participating.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard to you.
Bye.
Everyone stay safe.
You too. Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.